This monthly meeting Dillon County Council June 28th, 2017 is our monthly meeting at this point. And we are definitely, you know, I'm joyful this afternoon to see so many of you that show up today. And that lets me know that you are concerned about Dillon County and you are concerned about the things that goes on in Dillon County. And I gotta say, I welcome all of you school officials that are here, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Schaefer and different ones here. All the school board members, we thank you for being here and definitely I appreciate you being here. Certainly, my fellow councilmen appreciate you being here. Probably, when I look at you guys, I probably cut myself short for not visiting the school board meetings. Certainly, I plan to visit those school board meetings. But again, we welcome you. We welcome you here. This time, we're going to start our council meeting and we do so by asking our administrator, Mr. Rock and Berry, to be the leadest and the first teacher.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad you joined us in the invocation, so may we pray. Father, we thank you today again for life, health and strength. We just appreciate you in all that you do and that, Lord, that you're yet going to do. We know that government is ordained by you even from the days of old through Moses and certain ones, and we carry it on today. We know, Lord, it is you that put people in positions and not us. You said that you set kings up and you take them down. We pray for your blessings today upon this meeting. Lord, we pray that you will hold back any confusion, you hold back any disturbance. And, Lord, I say if there be anyone among us who would want to cause a division, who would want to cause a disturbance, who would want to cause this confusion, give us Satan and you have given us authority over that according to your word, for we find anything that come against this meeting today, we do show it in your purpose in this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Chairman, as a fore approval of this, and here is Adam that likely removed TNF at this time, second reading of an ordinance that's not ready for second reading yet.
He said that was 10, what does he mean?
Yeah.
All right. Do we ask for motion to amend the agenda moving TNF for me, for me agenda? This time I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion being made to be amended agenda and remove the TNF. Do I get a second?
Second.
Change the day in the discussions. Okay. Any more focus? All right. Moving right along with them four, approval minutes, five, twenty-four, seventeen, six, two, seventeen, call me, six, nine, seventeen, call me, six, sixteen, seventeen, call me. The motion this time to approve the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes. Any more seconds? Second. Okay, get a discussion. All in favor? Any more focus? Right, public hearing here, and this office, moving right along number five, we're agenda. Public hearing, eight, an office to amend, an office establishing here and go for Dillon County to provide a cap on county contracts not subject to approval and to provide for a local vendor, folks. Sign up. All right, Lord, and sign up to speak on that public hearing. Moving right along with five, be an office to amend, an office number zero-nine, got zero-three, the office provide for out of control and provide for penalty for violation of provision of the ordinance to add special requirements for pit bulls within the under park within areas of Dillon County. Public hearing, no one sign up? Okay. No one sign up? Moving right along with public hearing, five, eight, we're going to five, C, an office authorized to go into Title IV, Chapter 1, twenty, Title 12, Chapter 44, total law of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, Amendment, execute delivery of a fee in lieu types of special source revenue created between Dillon County, South Carolina, and Hall of Fame Two, Texas, LP and Hall of Fame Two landlords, S.C., O.C., collecting the company in connection with the expansion of the company of its affiliates and street facilities in Dillon County, project institution in the area of an amendment to fee agreement by and among Dillon County, Hall of Fame Two, Texas, LP and Hall of Fame Two landlords, after O.C. Institution, and the NIBR, one or more grant units relating to the project, the execution of a certain real property by county and the contingency of such property in connection with the project, provision by the county and certain public private infrastructure supporting the project, and provision by the county of certain public private infrastructure supporting other projects related there to. Do we got anything?
Uh, no, sir, that's the agreement with Project Badger. It's a typical fee in lieu of six percent. We have a six percent SSRC attached to that. It's a, it's a deal that we've been waiting on for some time that craves a lot of other stuff, but other than that, nothing.
Anything sometime? Uh, moving right along? Nobody sign up? No sign up for that? Public hearing this way, moving right along, five, D, an office to provide a budget appropriation for county purposes and county bill for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, end of June 30th, 2018, adopt improvement rates and fees and for other type purposes, county appropriation and purposes to establish the tax limits to provide for the budget. Do we have anybody sign up in here? All right, who you, who you got there?
Um, we have Jacory McCall, Richard Schaefer, Ray Rogers, Charles Curry, Nancy Finkley, and Doug Green.
Okay, we've got a, that's another people, and that's good. People have a right to express themselves and that's what the democracy is about. Again, we welcome that. But I want to just give you the guidelines of our public hearing. Now, our public hearing guidelines read as such. One, each organization will have three people to speak on their behalf. Each speaker will have a minimum of three minutes for their presentation. Two, for the record, each speaker should identify themselves and what organization they represent. Three, eight, comment should be addressed to the county council pertaining to the issue being discussed. All potential speakers should sign up to speak as soon as in the chamber, they probably already done that. And the last one is five, for any reason you were unable to make a presentation and would like to make a comment, you can do so in writing to the county administrator within five days of the hearing, and that's probably already passed. That someone already made that up. But however, we respectfully ask you to please cover yourself according to these guidelines. At this time, Madam Clerk, who is your first speaker?
Jacory McCall.
Okay, this is Jacory. How you doing here?
Good, how are y'all?
Good.
My name is Jacory McCall and I plan to go to University of South Carolina and practice political sides and study law and come back to Dillon County and practice law here and to serve all of you guys. Last week, I represented Dillon School District Four at Palmetto Boys State to expand my knowledge of government and the way our county and our state run. One of the most influential things I retained during this week was a quote by Lieutenant Governor Kevin Bryan, "Education is the foundation for the state of South Carolina." That pushes us forward into prosperity.
Mr. McCall, can I interrupt you a minute? Um, I certainly embrace your endeavors and certainly I'm happy to know that you are going forward with your education and sticking, um, political, political vision. I don't know, but you, you gotta stick to the budget. This is, uh, we are here.
I was giving an introduction, I'm sorry. South Carolina ranked four eighth out of fifty states in education. With a new ill and court coming to Dillon, we have the possibility of improving our county's economic development as well as educational growth. Taking money from local school district is taking a step back from government.
I gotta interrupt you again, sir. You talking issues that, talk about our budget. Talk about our budget. We have an eighteen million dollar plus budget and we're providing services to the citizens of Dillon County. And if you're gonna support that or you oppose that, if you're opposing that, talk about what you oppose.
Yes, sir. The school has received money from the county for twenty years. Last year, we received three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in funds from the county. This money is pledged to repayment and school debt for the new county school bill. Our school needs this money to fully fund day-to-day operations. Work with a budget to help our district succeed. We need to educate our...
Mr. Corr, your minute's up. You, you getting way off then what, what this is about. There's nothing in here about taking money from education or giving money to education, sir. Your, your time is up, okay, because you're getting away. Who's next on your list? Thank you though, sir.
Question. I thought we had three minutes.
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for letting me approach.
Pretty much, we're still talking about something that lets you think.
That's not democracy.
But I do, I do commend you for your efforts. Next?
Richard Schaefer.
Mr. Schaefer, your minute's up. Good afternoon.
I'm doing good and how are you all? I'm here to discuss your budget, Mr. Schaefer. I've been on the county school board for twenty-nine years. I was fully involved in nineteen ninety-six when this discussion on the referendum was brought forth. I was chairman of the school board then.
Mr. Schaefer.
I don't get it, but you said you, but you bringing in stuff that doesn't have anything
to do with our budget. You're talking about nineteen ninety-five, you're talking about a referendum. I, I don't get that being part of our budget.
And, uh, let's talk about the budget then. We've always been included in your budget, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars due year. So far, we've only been paid about half of it. The budget that you're proposing right now reduces your contribution from the referendum to half of that from what I am thinking.
Mr. Schaefer, you know as well as I know, we've already been on this road, we have had discussions in the past about this.
Is this my three minutes or is it your three minutes?
I gotta interrupt you again because you're not talking about our budget.
I am talking about...
You're trying to, you're trying to bring in something about a referendum and about...
The way that this is funded is through a referendum.
I can bring in, sir, that that money possibly was illegal for y'all to receive, but we don't need to get in that. That has nothing to do with... Talk to me about our eighteen million dollar plus budget to apply to pay.
I have nothing to do with your eighteen million dollar budget.
Services for the citizens of Dillon, but then you don't have anything to say about our budget.
There's three hundred thousand dollars a year that is contributed and allocated to the debt service.
I'm gonna cut you off, Mr. Schaefer, because that is not part of our budget and I'm gonna cut you off at this time and ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to call the next person.
I figured.
Yes, ma'am.
Ray Rogers.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Rogers.
Uh, councilmen, it's an honor for me to come down here because I don't come down here. All of you are my friends. I've never had a problem with you. The only thing that I came here to say is, and it's digging you a few questions, Dr. Kirby and I met yesterday with architects and what, what we're, what plans we have depend on revenue which comes from y'all. Now, I'm smart enough to know you got to say is to whether you continue and what you continue with. And all I'm saying is take a hard look at it because what we're, what we're trying to do is the best for the kids in Dillon County. I've been in forty-six years and I've put everything I had into it, y'all know that, trying to get better for our kids. Y'all got a decision to make in your budget and I hope that everything that you can do, you will do for the betterment of our county and for our kids, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Charles Curry.
Mr. Curry, this time.
Look, I can at least pass out these documents. I did want to start with the, uh, the ordinance that was passed, the order set up the OST tax, which the school is asking that you put back into your budget. That is a part of the budget.
Yes, sir.
We want to talk to you about.
Gotta interrupt you, sir. I gotta interrupt you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Curry, this is not, nothing concerning our budget. We've seen all this stuff before. This would probably be something, if y'all choose, whoever choose, would be for the court system if you want to, and that would be fine. That's what the judicial system is for. But to come in here with these documents accusing us one way or the other, this is not the time or place.
No, to accuse you, I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman, to put back into the budget, and that's what this public hearing is about, is whether or not the budget is proper or not.
Don't find these documents you got being anything, you should not have passed them out to us.
Don't look at them.
And you're taking up the time with council here. Now, you got three minutes. I want to treat everybody fair, but this nonsense to bring these documents up and try to incorporate them into what we are doing today is just nonsense. This stuff would be poor. If you want to take it to a court, then that's fine. But I'm saying, we, we don't have time to...
We don't get the opportunity to ask this council to put in the budget, put in the budget if you're here to discuss this.
You're talking about the eighteen plus million dollars that we planned to pass to offer services for the citizens of Dillon County. Sir, we'd be glad, you know, to operate this county, we'd be glad, but this stuff y'all will come up in with, this school stuff, sir, we, we don't, we're not in here to discuss this. Now, again, this is not appropriate place if you want to go to a court or something, then we probably could discuss that, but this is not what this for. Talk about the eighteen million plus dollars that you tried to pass to provide services, sir, for the citizens of Dillon County.
And I'm asking that you put back into your budget, which is what this meeting is about. I'm asking that you put back into your budget the, the money that is supposed to go to the Dillon County Board of Education.
Sir, we have no proof where that money is supposed to go.
We're looking at the documents.
Sir, we're not arguing with you. We're gonna close. Ma'am, do you have anybody else to speak?
Mm-hmm. Nancy Finkley.
Thank you.
I would like to defer my time to Charles Curry.
Okay, she's gonna give her time. Mr. Curry, if you're coming with the same stuff, then it, then it just ain't gonna work.
I don't have anything here.
Okay.
You're not gonna let me talk anyway.
Not, yes, I won't. If you got something, just, if, if you got a, if you're opposing that we offer services to the citizens of Dillon County, if you feel like we're doing wrong in that area, then you know, we can listen to you because that's what that eighteen plus million dollars for is, is to offer services for rescue employees and that type of stuff, sir, we'd be glad to. But to come up with an accusation against us that we took money one way or the other from somebody, sir, that, that has not been exten, and this ain't the place to establish that.
The place to establish that you put back into your budget for three hundred something thousand dollars.
Sir, you better pass documents out and I'm not gonna entertain none of this stuff.
Well, let me ask you this thing. Would you mind amending your budget?
Ma'am, what do you have left on that?
Would you mind amending your budget to increase from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars?
Do we have a Mr. Doug Broom in the room? Mr. Doug Broom, come forth. Please talk about the budget, Mr. Broom.
This is Doug Dill. Uh, excuse me. I'm Doug Broom. I'm the business manager for Dillon County Board of Education. Have been business manager of the county board of education since nineteen ninety-eight. During the time that I've been here and before the time that I got here since nineteen ninety-five, we've collected a portion of local option sales tax from the county council's budget and we've used that in accordance with what the taxpayers voted for back in nineteen ninety-five.
Sir, I gotta stop you too. You, you bringing in the same thing that was before you was trying to bring in. Again, sir, I must say that this is not the place for that. Sir, we have no evidence one way or the other, and if y'all want to take this stuff to a court, the judge decides, fine, but we are not a court. We're not a court. We cannot say one way or the other here that you were talking. We're, we're gonna pass a budget in and we'll, and the budget will pass this to the services to the citizens of Dillon County to operate this county. Now, sir, if you have support or if you're in opposition of us operating this, sir, this budget, then I hear you. But this stuff about the schools and what, all this kind of stuff, sir, we just ain't the place for it.
Yeah, but it does have something to do with...
Thank you. Who we got next, ma'am? That's it. Mr. Broom, thank you for coming here.
Mr. Chairman, they think we have everyone. We're looking at them.
But this is not a court. We, we're not at a court. But we cannot, we cannot hold court here and look at evidence. We're not, we're not the court.
We're not having a court.
And it would be wrong to say that we got evidence, we're gonna push back the court here. I just don't see that we can support that. You have a... Mr. Rock and Berry.
On what? On what issue?
Because I have an evidence and looking at this type of stuff.
I don't think that's the time to do it, but I, if you want my opinion about the speakers of the public hearing, I believe they should be afforded there full-time, Mr. Chairman, but that puts, you're the chairman and you're running the meeting.
Sir, I feel that they have, they, they had the opportunity, but for them to bring in stuff to be as the chair that is not related to our budget, I think it's just a call for it. I just don't see what we need to hear that. So, we're moving right along. What's next on this? Go ahead.
Mr. Berry.
Okay.
If we ever, in the budgets that we operate on now, because that money been in our budget, actually budget we operate on now, and we got that money, the status of our line says that money should come to Dillon County and then Dillon County wants to get part of it the way or all of the iris left up the governing body.
If you're asking for legal advice, I'd be glad to do that, but...
The legal advice is in our...
Not in a public.
Here it is. Okay, okay, okay. Moving right along with the new business number six, Jerry Huggins, we're talking.
Yes, sir. We got a gift for Mr. Huggins.
Oh, yeah?
Come on up, sweetie.
Valerie, you come up with...
Who picked your dog?
They had a gathering for Jerry today and he's, he's served out for some time now. We appreciate you helping a lot of veterans and, you know, veterans deserve that. We've seen that in every, you've served some loyalty here. An appreciation to Jerry Huggins, Veterans' Fair for loyal and faithful service to citizens of Dillon County. This is July 1, nineteen ninety-seven, to 06:30, 2017, presented by Dillon County Council. We're gonna miss you. Got some big shoes to fill and I know you're up to the task, but, but we are gonna miss you. We look forward to continuing to send you around the community and a little gift for you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Donations will be appreciated.
Uh, I'm broke.
I'll take IOUs.
I'm not.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment about Mr. Huggins? Uh-oh. Um, we know, we know what we had as Veterans' Fair's officer here, um, but I had the opportunity to call the State Department of Veterans' Fair, that's the name of it, veterans, talk to the folks in charge there. Uh-oh. And they indicated to me that Mr. Huggins was the best Veterans' Fair's officer in the state and they hated to see him leave. And I just thought y'all should know that.
That's true.
Thank y'all. Thank you, thank you.
I'd just like to add to what you're saying. I've been talking to the time too soon. You're a very pleasant man. Appreciate your service to Dillon County. Also, to the one that's coming behind you, I believe that she was a good pick, sort of a good choice and a valid position.
Thank you.
And just wanna thank you guys for all of your, thank you. Moving right along with the new business, big generator bid for the IT department.
Uh, uh, this is something we've been working on for a couple of years now. This will, they reimburse us, grant, reimburse seventy-five percent of cost of the generator. This generator served the IT department at Courthouse. Uh, we got, you see, three bids, three sealed bids, and bid amounts were, uh, Miller Plumbing and Electric bid ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and thirty-one cents. J. Northcut LLC bid ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Power Protec bid a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars.
Ricky, you say this one is coming from a frame or a...
Yeah, yeah, from a grant, same one that Moses got you for the fire station. This one is going to the IT department at Courthouse and they reimburse us seven-five percent.
Time we ask for motion to approve the bid. Make a motion to approve the lowest bid. Second. Second. Can any further discussion concerning the bid? All in favor? Any more? Thank you. Moving right along with the new business, C, contract with Ken Con to assist in all the...
He was a quality wire and each helper has retired. So, we tried to put out a bunch of favors and we really only got one that would, was interested in assisting with all this year that Ken Con out of Mullins, uh, and his bid was twenty-two thousand, five hundred.
Okay, is that the lowest bid he was...
That's the only bid we have.
And what, how many sources?
Uh, we put it out through, we put it out through the, uh, South Carolina, kind of association or county, and we didn't have any hits on that.
Anything from you, Rocky?
As it pertains to our previous vendor, that's in line with the project and the retro...
Yeah, that's right. So, if you have...
All right, anything else?
I'd like to ask a question, look, it's, Mr. Kenny, I think another county, they don't have somebody doing that. They've got, go through the finance department, they get all the records they need and they able to do that. You reckon if you could get more access, that's what you'd be looking at?
Uh, you probably don't start this CPA to get all this lined up.
I talked to Mr. Kevin Yocel over at Florida, he said that they don't have anybody coming. That's kind of extra cost on the tax burden.
Yeah, well, I'm sure they...
I would go through accounts.
Motion this time is to approve that bid.
I make a motion to approve Mr. Con's.
Second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Any more? Moving right along, the business D, repair bill, the warranty, for compact.
This is the big compact, they keep that landfill kind of crushed up to C and D, move the C and D around. Risk come to councils because of the price, just to replace the tracks and the undercarriage of that compactor and the repair bill on that was ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Sure. Why do you have anything you would want to...
No, sir.
Change, give thanks to the council. I need a motion this time for the repair bill to the warranty for compact. Approve that bid.
I make that motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Second and a further discussion. All in favor? Any more? All right. Moving right along with the business D, saw a hatchet camp, Michigan, dumpster for home. Anything I may, Mr. Richard?
Uh, I think Rock and Mark did good. Meanwhile, they, when they addressed that one.
Yeah, it's just something which are just want to do each year. It's a, they bring folks in to do renovations on houses. Uh, that's sponsored by which church, which...
Methodist Church.
Methodist Church. Great program, brings people in and helps people in our community.
I think what they want is just a box and a free box and a C and D.
Any discussion? All right. Motion to approve that they get the free box and that motion to approve...
I second that motion.
Second and a further discussion. All in favor? Any more? Moving right along with the new business F, recreational purchase.
Okay, in your pockets, you have one that, um, Mary Catherine Mafay Foundation for Cancer Awareness is presenting Off-Star Weekend, which was this past weekend, that was June 24th and 25th. M.O.K. Foundation is asked for a hundred dollar deed from the county council to help make this a success. They're a nonprofit organization and they're asking for each council to come out and support the cause. Um, they have asked for us to cut the grass, which we did that, and Fort John's, we did that, for them to have... that, um, for them to have restrooms out there. Is there anybody that wanted to, I know Stevie's gonna take some of his recreation for that, but.
Without you at first, I have, so I'll give it one.
All right, so the next ones are, Stevie Rice is doing a hundred dollars to Viper Queen's softball team, a hundred dollars to Heartbreaker's softball team, a hundred dollars to Mike McCray's AAU basketball team, a hundred dollars to Mary Catherine Mufay Foundation, two-twenty Dillon Rescue, two-twenty to Floyd Dell Fire, two-twenty to Floyd Dell Ladies Auxiliary, and two-twenty to Neighbors Helping Neighbors, for a total of twelve-eighty. All right, Mr. Rice. And Robbie Coward is, um, wanting to take from his recreation, five hundred dollars to Neighbors Helping Neighbors, five hundred dollars to Cooks for Christ, and seven hundred dollars to Y A N A, You Are Not Alone, for a total of seventeen hundred. Harold Moody is asking for a thousand dollars to come from his recreation to Gaddy's Mill Fire Department. Archie Scott is asking for seven hundred, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, to go to You Are Not Alone from his recreation. James Campbell is asking for six hundred and ninety to Y A N A, You Are Not Alone from his recreation, and, um, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cent to the Light of Fire Department, and four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cent to a Grove Neighborhood Watch, bid for Leslie Finkley. And that's all I have at this time.
I didn't hear an amount, so it's on the first one, but.
Twelve-eighty? You talking about this one?
Yes.
I don't think anybody, or Stevie, a hundred dollars.
Okay. It's a hundred as well.
When the new budget starts.
This time we need a motion to approve the recreational purchase.
I make a motion.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Can we get a third question? Not all in favor, recreational purchase. All right, thank you, man. Moving right along, old business, A, seven, how's this bid?
Uh, we've been out several bids, but all of we have, three, uh, bids come by, uh, usually did it in three-year increments, and I'll get to the bids. We've got Sheehan Hancock and Godwin, bid twenty-eight thousand, two fifty, first year, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, second, thirty thousand for the third. Webster Rogers, bid thirty-three thousand, three hundred, first year, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred for the second, thirty-four thousand, six hundred for the third year. And that's Love and Bailey, they bid thirty-three thousand, five hundred for each, each year.
Any further discussion?
Chief Bill, Sheehan Hancock and Godwin.
Need a motion to accept one of these bids? Okay, you got motion, Sheehan Hancock? And you got a motion to approve that, a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, any opposed? Thank you. Moving along in my old business, seven, mighty one. I'm sorry, number eight, financial, thank you, sir.
Right now, about we have, as of, as of yesterday, is three million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-two cents.
Any comments or any questions? No, thank you, Miss Gary. Rich?
Three million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-two cents.
All right, any further discussion? Thank you, Miss Gary. All right, moving right along, nine, administrative report.
Mr. Chairman, just the three items that I have here, uh, as we travel up to county associations, uh, conference, that Saturday I will be presenting, and I want, as Melissa packaged this, we're gonna apply for the Barry Larmour Award, uh, that's one of the most current awards there, it's a cooperation award, I think we stand an excellent chance, again, she's packaged something that we've worked on for the past couple of months, uh, we have some great partners, this wall, uh, be surrounded by the Inland Port, that's what initiated this, uh, our corporation, we've got great partners, uh, we've had them for some time, and they've only strengthened, uh, through time, uh, NESA is supporting us in this effort, uh, Duke Energy, all these are part of letters, uh, in this, the Marlboro Development Team, uh, of course, the Ports Authority, and CSX, uh, not to mention Commerce, uh, elected officials, as we have one here by Congressman Weiss, we've got so many people on board, and it's such a project with a great impact, that, that I think we stand a very strong chance, didn't want you to be caught off guard if we get our names called, I will present this that Saturday at noon, okay? Second item is, and just, just to bring to your attention early, Fairfield Road, which is gonna go over, uh, a U-Haul, so to speak, road's gonna be strengthened significantly, that will be the road that serves Inland Port into Industrial Park Boulevard, Boulevard, uh, that, that's been slated, we want, like, again, Melissa and her group at CTC that's kicking in money for that, SCDOT already had designated money to resurface, uh, of course, we're gonna do much more than resurface at this point, uh, we'll strengthen considerably, and then the ports having to put money in this, and that's another way that they got the skin in the game. I bring that to your attention, because eventually, it may be a road that the county has to, to bring in. Uh, I'm not as much alarmed by that, because the work's being done now, and the very reason why the CTC is set up is to help maintain those type of roads, but also the Economic Development Fund that we've established, those are, uh, authorizing expenditures to, to do that, so that's something we're gonna have to look at, because that road, although it won exclusively serve the park, a great deal of that traffic will be park-related, okay? Uh, finally, did you come in here, she's down there? We, we started naming, uh, employing departments, heads of the month, and for this month, our department head, which was voted on by administration, I don't see Steve Moody, is Steve Moody here? Steve Moody is over our Roads and Bridges and does an outstanding job, y'all know we called on him, he's Johnny on the spot, they do good work, they're tasked with a whole lot of stuff, because we have a lot of dirt roads to maintain, and, and, you know, I want them on a daily basis, and, uh, I, I just like the way they respond. Employee of the month is Miss Dee, but she has no idea. This lady, as you know, she greets you when you come in the door, hey, let's, let's get a ride. Sure, yeah, yeah, uh, come get a photo, sure. Uh, Dee is always on time, sometimes, uh, past time, uh, she's one of those, whatever takes a hit, the job does.
Ronnie, come here.
Yes. Dee, we so much appreciate. We have gifts for you. Uh, Jackie Sue, family deal. But, but we will take care of that. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my, my report.
Sir, anybody have anything to put in this time? All right, we're moving right along with the agenda. T and R, A, third reading, R to amend, and R to amend and establish a procurement code for Dillon County to provide a cap, and county council, not subject to council approval, and to provide for a local vendor preference.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is, uh, third reading of an ordinance that changed the procurement code a bit, um, the code as it stands now has a cap of ten thousand dollars that the county administrator can approve without council's approval, um, and this changes that amount to five thousand, and it also provides for a local, um, vendor preference in the event that a local vendor and an outside vendor bid the same amount, the local vendor will be awarded the contract, under the provision of the code.
This time we need a motion to approve procurement code.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
It is second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, any opposed? Thank you, sir. Moving right along, number ten, B, third reading, R to amend, R to, do not, that's your opinion, R to provide for an animal control, provide for penalty for violation of a provision of this R to add special apartments for pit bulls in the new operating area of Dillon County.
Mr. Chairman, this is third reading of an ordinance to amend our animal control ordinance to provide special provisions for pit bull dogs, and, uh, it mirrors the, the provisions of the city ordinance that deals with pit bulls, they have a procedure in place that I think's worked well for them, and, uh, this adopts those, except it makes changes as to who does what, obviously, because we, the county has a different animal control office than the city. But essentially, the, the residents have to register the dogs, have them tagged, they have to keep them in a certain type of pen, so that they can't get out, or so that it's hard for them to get out, they have to be with them at all times that they're out in the public.
Thank you, sir. This time we need a motion at this time, approve this R, third reading.
I make a motion.
Second. Motion, my councilman, County, I second, my countyman Jack Scott, any further discussion? Not all in favor, passing through, any opposed? I put it right on the ten, C, third reading, R to, I presume, about four, chapter eleven, twenty, column twelve, chapter forty-four, Dakota Law of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six amendment, execution of a living of a fee in lieu of taxes and special social. Very depressed group through Dillon County, South Carolina, Harbor Freight Two, that's your, being freight, uh, being a Lord South Carolina L L C collectively, the company in connection with inspection of the company, and this affiliate's feelings and distribut ies, and services in Dillon County, the project's execution in lieu of, and maybe, the fee agreement, if I had a more Dillon County, Harbor Freight Two, that's how it'll be, and Harbor Freight Two, Land, or South Carolina L L C, execution of lieu of one more, grant agreement related to the project, and the execution certainly will profit by the county, and for instance, such property in connection with the project, provision by the county in a certain public and private insurance to support other projects, and matter of length there, too.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this, 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 yes, process is executing our deal with Harbor Freight, uh, withstanding as we signed an MOU, uh, we're, we're still negotiating, negotiating over one word, at this point, as it pertains to, uh, road, so from this standpoint, it executes the deal, but I, I look to sign that MOU and have everything squared away, uh, this week.
Gentlemen, before you vote, I gave you a plaque, the ordinance that you have has an exhibit eight-one attached to it, replace this, uh, for that eight-one that you have in your pack, is, is the same plaque with a fair monitor, can we?
Motion this time to approve third reading.
I make a motion to approve third reading.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Not all in favor, third reading? Moving on, ten, D, third reading, R to provide for appropriation for the county purpose, and account of Dillon for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty seventeen, and then July third, twenty eighteen, adopting implemented rates and fees, and for other tax purposes and county appropriation purposes, and to establish the tax millions to provide for the budget.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman? Um, I don't feel like we need to vote on this, but that, I really don't know what's in it. I hadn't seen it, since it's been revised and things put in or taken out, I don't, I, I hadn't seen it, so I don't know how I could vote, how we could vote on it. I'd like to make a motion that we don't vote on.
Stevie, I was looking at it, and, and everything, just like, uh, uh, everything's going, going up together, dusting, fucking down, this guy's the money, used to farmers give, but then I can't tell where the money's going.
Well, I mean, the one I seen was from three weeks ago, I think it's been changed probably several times since then.
So, Mr. Rice, you put it on the floor that you want a motion to not approve the third reading?
I don't even think we need to vote, yes or no, I don't think we need to vote to do anything on it, but.
Okay, so, you, you want either put on the floor, not to vote on, so we know motion carried, or what do you want to put on the floor that you're not gonna vote for the third reading, which one do you want to put on the floor?
I mean, has full council, has full council seen the budget? I mean, had time to look at?
I pretty much did the budget workshops, and I, I've looked up and seen it.
I mean, I, I was here too, but I think there's been different things since then, I mean, I know I hadn't had time to look at, I didn't have it in my package, I didn't see it, about the rest of the council.
We entertain what you want, which motion you want to put on the floor?
I mean, I don't think we need to vote on budget passing, I don't know.
Or you want to put on the floor a motion to not vote on the third reading?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Blackson put on the floor, a motion to not pass the third reading of the budget. Okay, do we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second. Any further discussions? All in favor of not to vote on the third reading, or raise your hand? If you not vote on the third reading, you not voting for the three. So not to vote on the third reading?
Is that a motion to table the third reading?
Yes, sir.
Is that what that's?
He pretty much voted not to have the third reading, so we don't have a third reading, okay? All right, moving right along, all right, T and E, third reading, and R to authorize, pursuant to title square, chapter forty-four, Dakota Law of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six amendment, the execution of lieu of a fee in lieu of, for Lord Texas, agreement binding through Dillon County, South Carolina, accompanying known to the county, the project freedom as sponsors, and one more, sponsor affiliate to provide for a fee in lieu of the Lord Texas, and send into the search expression, source revenue credits, and other related matters.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask, is tournament deal still with us?
Yeah, we have Claire Hutter here, from Parker, Poland.
Mr. Chairman, Claire.
Hi, we're hiding out. Good.
You just hit on the highlights, so.
Okay, um, I'd like to introduce the council today, Mr. Andrew Baria, who is from the company that is, um, in this project, and I think I might be prepared to just give you an overview of, of project itself.
Certainly, and, uh, thank you again for sparing some time here today to listen to Freedom Solidarant, and that here in Dillon County. This is a five-megawatt solar farm we have planned out on the east side of your office county, up by Highway nine, it's approximately fifty-acre site, and I know Claire has been here with you all the past couple of readings, and I've come down today, just on behalf of the company as well, to answer any of the questions you all may have about this project, and the economic stimulus it can provide for your county, and in any respect, everybody's tired here, said other many things on the dock today, I'd be happy to turn it over to y'all, if there is further follow-up questions y'all have to have answered by us.
Okay, we don't got any question? The Wallace side, huh? Sir? The Wallace side, is that, where's Paul? Is that the Wallace side?
This is the site out by Highway nine, um, out.
Close to the D.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, you need a motion to pass third reading? We have motion to pass third reading, motion to the county, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? All right, yeah, second reading, preservation taxes, and R to for the county of Dillon.
Now struck, now struck from there, gentlemen, Mr. Blackson.
Thank you, sir, moving on to G, second reading, R to Dillon County, South Carolina, to amend and amend, and restate, reenter industrial, it's joint county industrial area brought by, and among Dillon County, Marav County, South Carolina, and Marav County, South Carolina, ask to re-enroll the park, modify and strip to the park revenues in the event, like issued by Dillon County, in one search expression, source revenue bond, and other matters related to the four billion.
Mr. Chairman, these multi-county parks were structured, uh, in order to, uh, provide more incentives for companies that come in by the state, uh, what I would stress here, when you see the word, uh, enlarge, that does not mean additional acreage goes due to, that, uh, shared by Marion, Dillon, and, uh, Marv, okay? That's just, uh, acreage that has not been developed, will be brought into the park, that's not enlarged in the park, so just to know that.
Now, is this the multi-county park, is this the multi-county?
Well, it, well, acreage is already included, okay? It's just acreage that hasn't been developed, like, if farmland brought in, is what that amounts to, so it's not, in other words, we're not sharing more of the existing land, I, I just want to emphasize that, that's not what's taking place.
And this is, this is the first I've heard of this, but I, I mean, I, I understand we, this is the, uh, I guess what I'm trying to get clear, is this part of hard freight?
This, this is part of hard freight, yeah, this is.
This land is required for the hundred and fifty, I'm making.
This is required for hard freight.
Okay, if it's required to have a hard freight, I don't have any objection.
Any further discussions? Not need motion pass second reading? I make that motion, all right, the second. Second, all right, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Standing in eleven, or Resolution A, Resolution adopted in twenty seventeen, Dillon County had a mitigation plan. Mr. Hager, what's in?
I am.
How you doing, sir?
I'm doing well.
Good. Rest is about to be used, right? Resolution adopted. Every five years, you're, meeting everybody, every five years, your hazard mitigation plan has to be updated, and when you update it, you have to do a resolution for municipality, town of Loudon, town of Lakeview, town of Dillon, county, and that is, in the event you have a disaster, and the declaration is declared, so you will be qualified, you will qualify for grant funding, but if you don't adopt this resolution, if something happened in municipality or county, then it, you cannot qualify for the man. All right, you don't have any question?
Let's play you that sample, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. All right, it's time we ask a motion to adopt the resolution for twenty seventeen, Dillon County had a mitigation plan. You make that motion, okay, that's, second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman, Cal, we got a second by Councilman Jack Scott. Right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Not alone in eleven, on Revolution B, Dillon County, part satisfied of the parties in Title Twelve, Chapter Forty-four, South Carolina Code of Law, such as a lot of, an investment expansion incurred by a company known to the county, as part of freedom and related entities to qualify, and is financially eligible for a fee in lieu of taxes, arrangement with Dillon County, South Carolina, device of related economic, developing incentives, including special source revenue credits and other matters relating there, too.
That was a pain to the company, just about to us.
Okay. She got a motion, we have way of, this time we ask a motion to approve this resolution. I make a motion to approve it. Okay, any second. All right, any discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? All right, eleven C, resolution to approve partial release of land option, zero-five-eight-thousand-eight-nine-zero-zero-two-one.
Mr. Chairman, I've provided this to you right before the meeting as well, this, um, you may remember, there was a, a company, it was putting solar panels near the Harbor Freight facility at one time, the Hamilton property, which is the property here, is on the west side of that parcel, just to kind of give you an idea of where it's at, it's on Long Street Road, uh, near Thirty-four, across from where the apartments are, making the ball field. Uh, in the option agreement that the county signed with Ms. Hamilton and her children, Ms. Hamilton had the right to sell up to five acres of that property out of the option, uh, and have it surveyed, and the county would have a right for refusal if they decided to buy it for the amount that she was offered. Well, someone has offered her, offered to buy four point two acres of that land, and she's asked that the council approve, uh, the terms of the option, giving her the right to sell that, that up to five acres, four point five-two in this case, and you'll see attached to it is a release and a plant of the land, that's identified there, um, showing the home and, and the Long Street Road. Jeez, and what, I guess what I, I'll just put it clearly, I think she's got the right to do this, but we have the right to pay her the amount she was offered, which I think is sixty-five thousand dollars, if y'all want it, we can pay her sixty-five thousand dollars for it, if not, I think we're required to.
Make a motion for standing. Like, this time, we retain a motion. I make that motion, Eric, sir. Resolution to approve partial release of land auction, zero-five-eight-nine-zero-zero-two-one, got a motion to approve that resolution by Councilman Cal, we need a second. I'll second. Second by Councilman Cal, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? This time, we want, this way of council comments, any council member, one way of comment, can you put a sentence that's not?
Yeah, um, I know we invite the public in here, we want them to be involved, um, but we're nothing but representatives of them, and we have public hearings, I think they all have the opportunity to speak, whether we agree or disagree with what they say, 'cause, uh, we're representing lands, and, and we want them to be involved, so, I mean, we do have a public hearing, I think they, they deserve the opportunity to speak.
Okay, I want to comment on that, too, 'cause I am a council member, and all comments are welcome. I want to go on record saying that the general public were not deprived, they were not deprived to speak, they had an opportunity to speak, but you have to speak according to the budget and stay on line with the budget. Bring in other stuff was just not called for and was not permitted by me at the chair, because it is a budget hearing, it's not a hearing, would I hit a whole court? Would I hit a look over documents and exhibits and try to do any legal litigation here? That's for the court system. That's why I took the position that I took on this, and I still stand on that position. I don't think anyone should walk away from here and say that the general public did not have a right to speak, or did not have an opportunity, but they knew what the guideline was, we told, the guideline was explained, so when you get off the guideline, it is the sole responsibility of the chairman to make sure that you follow by the guideline, and that's all I asked for, we'd have been here all day long trying to hold court, and none of us are judges, none of us are the jury, that is for another time and another place, thank you. Anyone else?
I like that. I've been on, I've been on this council about five years now, and I know we got rules to go by, but this is the first time I've seen time called on anybody since I've been on this council. I've seen people get off the seat and talk fifteen minutes in the lab.
But to, as a chairperson, it is your responsibility, any chair, the one not to be here, the one before me or after me, to make sure things are done decently and art, and if you allow things to get out of control, it'll run long and long and long and long. Again, it is my position that some of this stuff were not called for, and I called it the way I saw it, and again, there is another place for some of this stuff, but certainly, this is not the place. Anyone else?
I'd like that comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, I was planning on voting on the budget, and the reason I didn't vote on it was because I feel like that every council needs to know exactly what's in there, and Councilman Grass raised the issue, he haven't had time to look at it, so I'm, that's the reason I wanted to go with that, you know, I want him to look at it, that way we have maybe a call meet and come back and pass the budget, because we gotta have a budget, right, Mr. Minister? And I'd like to, at this time, see if this council agrees to give him to, could we do it Friday morning, Friday afternoon, come on and get it done, that'd be okay?
That we need to get the other speaking open, we got twenty hours before we be in the side.
That'd be good, Mr. Grass?
Yeah, I just, I would like to see.
Okay, that's what I, I want to make sure, too, but I wasn't ready to prepare to vote for the budget, but I want to make sure every councilman's got a right to look at it.
Anyone else? Let's go. Okay, now, council member, all right, now, we're gonna move right along, we got a, uh, number thirteen, executive session, you cannot vote about, or this time ask a motion to go in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, we don't find it necessary to have an executive session, okay?
No, not necessarily to have an executive session, all right, we'll pass the executive session. We want to thank you, gentlemen, for coming, all of you, that's good, we want to certainly thank the general public for a period of the day, again, it can always excite me to see people come out, that shows me that people are concerned, and that people want to be involved, and you should be involved, you know, this is a democracy, this is an elected body, and that shows that we are accountable to any time that you come in and send these meetings, it certainly makes me feel good. At this time, we ask for a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. The second. Any further discussion? All in favor of adjourn? This meet for now, adjourn.